Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM and I'd like to call to order the December 8th meeting of the Town Council to order. If we could kindly take a moment of silence to acknowledge all those that are serving here and abroad, ensuring our safety and well-being, that would be great. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, and if so, could you kindly identify yourself? Hearing and seeing none, this meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar, Pursuit to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 Order, Suspending Certain Provisions of Our Open Meeting Law. Jeannie, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
No, we did not.
Okay. Council comments at this time? Okay. Mary, do you have a report?
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment. It's a happy one. I had the pleasure at Mary's from Mary's email of starting to watch the videos that Jamie Rook and Don Mackey put together, and I can't tell you how much I'm enjoying those. What a fabulous job and what an opportunity for folks who don't necessarily follow town meetings or, you know, or read the reminder to see on our website exactly the faces and some of the names and all the people that make Islam Meadow work every day. And I just want to say kudos to Don and Jamie as well as Ms. Mary, who was a great narrator.
Thank you.
Seconded that motion.
Heard.
I think everybody's happy with that, so great job as well. Mary, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, and it's brief because I know you have a heavy agenda and I was totally just kind of overwhelmed with, you know, repeating the same things over and over again in these reports. We've sort of hit, I don't want to say it's a lull, because certainly not a lull in terms of the pace of the action, but we're kind of running in place on a lot of significant projects in town that I do reference later on in my report. And the reason that I feel like we're running in place and not making the progress I would like is that we are totally and completely overwhelmed with COVID questions and issues of quarantine and new infections and exposures and people wanting to take vacation and some employees not paying attention to what they've been instructed to do. And it's just, it keeps us going seven and a half hours a day and in many cases, much longer than that. The HR department is totally overwhelmed between those questions and the Department of Division of Unemployment Assistance fraudulent claim attention that we have to pay to that. So we're not doing a heck of a lot, but we're doing a heck of a lot every day. And it can be very frustrating, very stressful, very time-consuming. And so if you have any doubts about, hey, why isn't this done or how come we're not seeing that, that's about the best explanation I can give you. It's extremely frustrating because everybody's really putting in a lot of effort and we just feel like we're, you come in in the morning bursting with energy to tackle a myriad of things and then you end up at the end of the day saying, scratching your head and saying, gosh, I didn't, I didn't do anything today except answer, you know, 72 emails and 45 phone calls and et cetera, et cetera. And I realize that's common. Everybody kind of is in the same mode if you're working anywhere. But anyhow. So as Kathy was kind enough to note, we did spend an awful lot of time on that video and I do praise Don for, it was certainly his idea. He had suggested it months ago. Jamie did a great job cutting and splicing because that was done over a period of probably four or five different days. And I think she made a product look pretty seamless. And I was very impressed with the ability and the entertainment factor that it gave to some of the department heads because they really were invested in it and many of them went, went out of their way to, to do a very thorough walkthrough of their departments and so forth. So not only did I enjoy doing it, but I also learned a lot at the same time. So beyond the video, the next sort of major thing I've been working on this month has been, as I note in my report, the interviewing of several department head positions. We did two today for the Council on Aging. We got four interviews scheduled tomorrow for the police chief. Got two more scheduled for Thursday. We're still trying to find somebody to work in our HR department and our finance office. So there's an awful lot of time spent on that sort of thing, but primarily the focus has been on the police chief. And as I say in my report, everything from posting the job description, refining the job description, recruitment efforts, determining where to advertise, who to talk to to get it on their websites, to attract quality candidates, the review and vetting of the numerous resumes that we receive, contacting references. And I realize much of this may sound to you like HR functions, and they are, but I've taken, needless to say, a very active role in trying to make this decision the right one and to include as many aspects of the community perspective as I can. So I've spent a great deal of time also talking to the business community representatives, to our other public safety representatives. I've solicited what I'm going to call a mini advisory group. It's not a committee, but it's just a couple of people who live in town who bring perspective from law enforcement as well as the school education system and general politics, small P. So those interviews, as I say, begin tomorrow and I hope to have a candidate for your consideration by next week. I don't know if that's feasible or not because we've had a bit of an upset in our HR department in terms of staffing that just occurred this week. So have another sort of interruption in the free flow of the workflow of that department, but we're, we're moving through it. So that's where that stands. And the interviews, as I say, will be held at the media room in the Council on Aging. And they're not advertised as open meetings because in fairness, since all the interviews couldn't be done on the same day, we didn't want the candidates who are going to be interviewed on Thursday to have advanced access, if you will, to the questions that are being put because we have a series of questions that we devised for all the candidates. So I probably can't control that as much as I would like to, but my hope is that the interviews will remain private, at least until after the last of them is completed. I've also submitted for your consideration two appointments, one to the Board, to a Board of Health vacancy and another to the Housing Authority. Both, both of those candidates were recommended by the respective boards on which they may ultimately serve if you approve and their documentation, their resumes and their letters of intent, if you will, are included in the package that Jeannie forwarded to you the other day. Other than that, I know Steve's with us tonight, but then he can comment further on this, I suppose, but he and Diane and Don worked very hard to get our tax recapitulation submitted to the DOR and they turned it around and approved our submission in about a week's time, which was great. So now I know Steve is working on the compilation of free cash certification and hopefully we'll have that shortly after he submits it and be able to move forward with our budget for next year, as hard as that is to even think about at this point. Lastly, or penultimately, as I alluded to in the early part of my report, we do continue to keep these big projects in mind. I've itemized them in the report. You know, this, this employee policy booklet, our compilation of fixed assets, our master plan, financial policy guidelines. I know Steve is working on those, the whole capital improvement plan, the long-term capital improvement plan. And we just, I know this sounds like an excuse, but we just don't have two or three or four hours to set aside uninterrupted to really pay the attention to these major projects that they warrant and require. And I don't know that there's a solution to that anytime in the near future, but we do have for your review next week, I think you'll be getting the paperwork shortly, is an update on the outstanding capital improvement projects that you had before you last year. Actually, in December of 19, there was a report made to you. And so Steve has spent a great deal of time trying to figure out where the balances are on those projects and it entails talking to each department head that's responsible for those projects and also the accounting aspect of how much money is left in each fund. And that may sound like it's not terribly complex, but it's extremely time-consuming. And when you're the only person in the department doing it, it's extremely time-consuming. So we're going to get there though, I promise. And lastly, we have a couple of other items that will, that through Mike Kane's understanding, we moved off to a meeting for next week because they deal with the shared health with some dog issues on zoning bylaws, potential violations of special permits. I've been in touch with our legal counsel, our animal control reporting. There's going to be a significant dangerous dog hearing coming up in the not-too-distant future and a number of media inquiries on that subject. So all of those things, instead of adding them on to tonight's agenda in light of the fact that you had the remaining public hearing on the zoning bylaw, Mike agreed that another meeting would be more appropriate to handle all those so that everything could get the attention that it deserves. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have at this point.
Yeah, through the chair.
Tom?
Yeah. Mary, do we have anything in writing from the state in ink finalizing our funding for this year?
We, we were notified some months ago that the fiscal '20 levels were going to be honored for fiscal '21. I mean, I think it was in an email. I don't have a letter or anything like that signed by anyone, but when the Commonwealth was still in the process of figuring out its budget, which is now almost, I guess it's on the governor's desk now, the final budget.
Yep.
But no, we've been under the, we were advised, oh, at least back in the summer, that the fiscal '20 levels would be honored for fiscal '21.
That's with the assumption that the governor signs the bill that's on his desk now for his signature?
Well, there was no caveat attached to the representation that they would honor the fiscal '20 funding. There was no, no wording that suggested that it was subject to approval of a fiscal '21 budget by the governor. In fact, even if there were, which as I said, there wasn't, we budgeted well below those benchmarks. That's where we cut, if you recall. So we're, we're in good fiscal shape for fiscal '21 regardless of what happens from this point forward. The governor, I think, has 10 days from when the joint committee sent the budget to him, which I think was late last week. So within the next week or so, they should have the finalized '21 budget. And the front page of today's Springfield paper said that they're starting on the '22 calculations by enlisting some reporting from financial experts in Boston. So, and we'll be right on their heels. Steve tells me that he's getting ready to put out the budget requests to all the department heads. Hopefully we'll have the preliminary submissions from them in a template that Steve may be making some changes to before the middle of January.
Thank you.
Ralph, I saw your hand up earlier. Do you have?
I do. Mary, I've got a quick question for you with regards to appointments to boards. I noticed in the packet that we got that the board had voted to pick a recommendation on a specific person and submit that to you. Is that the procedure going forwards now that the different boards will try and find someone, make a recommendation to you, and then you submit it to us? I think it's great that the board gets input into it. I know when I was on the planning board and we needed a member, it was more or less, here, this person's on your board. I guess that's a new procedure or not?
Um, it may be a de facto procedure. It wasn't anything that I devised or implemented, but what, what happened was when we made a larger, more comprehensive effort at getting people to volunteer for these respective boards, as their notices came into our office, Jennifer would forward them, like, like one of the candidates tonight indicated an interest in not only the Housing Authority, but Conservation, I think, and one other board. And Conservation was full at the time and Housing Authority had a vacancy. So what we did was reached out to the director of the Housing Authority and asked that her board, her authority members, at least speak with the candidate who'd expressed an interest and the Board of Health did the same. So that's how it came about. And then each board that, that found the candidate acceptable to them told us, told my office that, that that's the way they wanted to proceed. But they do understand that those appointments are subject to council's right to review and reject within a certain time period.
No, I was just saying, I, I like the fact that the boards have input into it and I think that's great.
Well, they will continue to. It's important. I agree with you.
Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. Mary, no question, just a comment. I want to thank you for all the fires you put out day in and day out and doing so for the last several months. I heard it in your voice. I, you know, we know what's going on in the town hall and I know lately it's even been worse. And so I appreciate everything you've done for us as a community. And I would also like to say, I have some time on my hands. I've been known to come in and do grunt work, files.
Ah.
I mean, don't give me an assignment for, for Steve because I can't add one and one, but I'm happy to help out if we can do something to, to free up someone else to do something else.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. And I, and I'm sorry if my frustration is showing a little bit. You know, yesterday I had a long talk with Mike and Jeannie and I thought afterwards, boy, they both seem so patient and I seem so on fire, literally, that I probably should have acknowledged that to both of them after the meeting. But, you know, when you wanted, when you want to accomplish a lot and you know there's a lot to be done, it's, it's hard to stifle those, those instincts and those impulses to get moving. And, but we have to just deal with what we have to deal with. But thank you for those kind words. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Pat?
Thank you, Mike. Through Mike, Mary, I want to say that we're the group that you can let your guard down with, I think. You're, you're, we're the ones that you, you can feel comfortable with as opposed to your employees, your department heads. It's hard to let, let them see that frustration, but we, we need to see it and we respect it.
Well, thank you, Pat. I appreciate that.
Any other comments at this point? Okay. I just want to say we are, I appreciate everyone's comments. We are pulling together as a team. We have a great group of people, a great council, tons of diversity. And we're here to help Mary and support Mary. She could certainly use some help with, with quite a few issues such as dog issue that she brought up earlier that are coming, coming across her desk. There are much, items of much more significance that would enable her to be able to work on those projects if she had some help dealing with everything else on her plate. I will only mention, and this is not any criticism to our DPW, but DPW is well-staffed and well-structured with multiple layers. And Mary could use some support like that as well. And we know good help's hard to find, but it's, it's on the radar and that's the direction we would like to move when it's appropriate. But Mary, you're doing a great job and we all appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mike. It does, it is very helpful to know that I have your support and I know I do and I appreciate it very much. And I know I have the support of the department heads too. So I don't, you know, I don't really mean to sound like a woe is me or a martyr, but so enough said about that, I guess. But thank you again.
Could I have a motion for an approval of our open session minutes from the November 10th meeting, please?
Mike, should I?
For discussion? Pardon?
I, I would move it for discussion. I, I've seen an error and I'd like to see corrected.
Okay. Well, if we can put a motion on the floor and have a second, then we'll, we'll open up for discussion.
Yeah, I moved to make the, I moved, well, actually it's not mine, is it?
You can take it.
Yeah. Don, maybe Don can?
I'll, I move to approve the open session minutes of November 10th, 2020.
I will second them.
Don presented a motion. It's been seconded by Marilyn and that will open us up for discussion. I will have a comment at the end as well, if it's not covered. But Tom, you're first in line.
Yeah, I'm just, it's a minor thing, but it's important to get the numbers correct. On page three, a comment that I made, list like 1/12 instead of 1 and 1/2. So I'd like to ask that that be corrected to 1 and 1/2, not 1/12.
Where?
Oh, I see it.
On page three.
It says, Councilor O'Connor commented that earlier on, everything was based on a 1/12% increase and the break should be between the one and the two, not between the one and the one.
Or it could be 1.5.
1.5, it's easier.
Okay.
Yep, good catch.
Any, any other amendments to that document? I would just like to bring up the, the section and you'll, you'll have to excuse me, my screen went out, but there was some conversation on the bylaw and we were talking about percentage, percentages and the document in the open session shows percentages, but there were numbers discussed as well. And, and then there was a direction that we would take by consulting with our attorney and the Pioneer Valley as well. And like I said, my screen just, my second screen just went out. So if you could help me with that, that section, and if everyone agrees, maybe we can insert some language to cover that subject matter.
So Mike, I believe you're talking on page four, the second paragraph. It says there was a lot of discussion regarding the total gross area and what the range should be. Some of the counselors liked the, and it says 15 to 30 cap. You want to add percentage, 15% to 30% cap? Some liked the 25% to 33%. Is that correct?
The language, when we, when we were converting, and I, and I don't know if it's essential, I, I would be happy to welcome any comments, but we started converting percentages to actual numbers. An example, 30% of 700,000 square feet would be 210,000 square feet. So there was mentions of numbers and some of those numbers will, will become relevant in the motions going forward when we enter our public hearing. And we also, is there anything mentioned in the open session meetings about direction, about checking with Pioneer Valley or consulting?
Mike, through the chair. I know I mentioned it. I just forgot in, yeah, because I think, you know, I know I mentioned because we have technical support and.
I mean, it is all on, it is all on tape. So if we're okay with it, it's, it's, like I said, Marilyn?
I guess my question is, is there something that needs to be said to further clarify? I mean, there was a lot of discussion, confusion over how to, how to reach the right number and how to put it into effect on, into the bylaw. And we agreed that we needed to go back, come back with some additional information. And so I, you know, I'm not sure that we need to belabor this unless there was something specific that you, that's missing that you feel is important, like we requested that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission weigh in on this. You know, that's not there.
Go ahead. Pat?
Through the chair, as I understand it, Mike is trying to make a link between the discussion, which we did have.
Right.
An alternate to using percentages. And that alternate was using square footage of 250,000 square foot or 210,000 square foot of the 700,000. And I think since he intends on bringing this forward, and we all heard this mentioned, I think he's trying to create the link between the mention of that in the last meeting and bringing it forward here. Mike, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what I remember. I remember distinctly a discussion about shifting over to, to actual footage numbers.
And I didn't know if we, if we wanted clarification in the minutes. As, as long as we're all on the same page, the meeting was taped, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. But I, I wanted people to be aware because we did shift from percentages to suggested motions that will come up. And I just wanted to create a little dialogue here so that we all know where it came from. And a lot of it came from people that are chiming in. It's much easily, easily able to understand a number versus a percentage and where these percentages came from first off of numbers. So, and that was the advice that we were given from the people that we reached out to before these motions, suggested motions were, were put in place. So I think I'm, I think I'm fine with it if everyone else is. So, and Jackie, my, my hats off to you because that, you know, there was a lot, a lot of moving parts to that public hearing. As we all know, it's been continued numerous times and you're doing a great job with it. But whether these subtle nuances have any significance or not, I'm, I'm not really sure. What I am comfortable with is that everything, what is taped. So.
Yeah.
Tom?
Through the chair. I, I think you're on point. The minutes ought to accurately reflect the motions. So if we're looking to draw that link, I think it's important to have the minutes amended to show that.
Okay. Can we make an amendment to say that, you know, the language that shows we had, we were given direction in one of those resources, it would be Pioneer Valley, and that we are going to work on converting percentages to numbers for efficiency and easier interpretation by anybody watching our meetings. Ralph?
So Mike, if we're looking at doing that, I would rather it be accurate. And I would suggest that we not vote on the minutes tonight. Let Jackie go back through, research by the tape, exactly what was said, put that into the minutes and then vote on it.
Um, that sounds helpful to me because like I said, I'm working with multiple screens and my page jumped. And in terms of efficiency, none of us want to be here at 11 o'clock tonight. I would say not even 10 o'clock. So.
Ralph, present in the form of a motion?
I can make it in the form of a motion.
I will second it.
Present that in the form of a motion, please.
I would move that we table the minutes until our next meeting, allowing Jackie time to research the topics we discussed as far as the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and as far as possibly having the minutes reflect changing from percentages to specific amounts.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Thank you. The motion's been made. The motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion with Don?
Yeah, I mean, in the interest of keeping it clear, I'm going to withdraw my original motion.
Okay.
Cool.
And who seconded?
I will withdraw my second.
Thank you.
Oh, Marilyn did that one, yeah.
So I, we can vote on the motion that's on the floor right now that's been seconded. If I start with Pat Henry?
Yes.
Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
And Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
And I, Mike Kane, is a yes as well. Thank you all.
Sorry, Jackie.
Okay, it is 6:15, and our next item, agenda item is our public hearing scheduled for tonight. It was scheduled to start at 6:15. This public hearing is continued from our November 10th meeting and is to address the establishment of a mixed-use village district bylaw. At this time, we can consider the public hearing is open, and our council members are, I'll start at the top here. I, Mike Kane. To my right is Donnie Anderson, Pat Henry, Kathy Hill, Marilyn Richards, Tom O'Connor, and Ralph Page. Jeanie, could you kindly read the legal notice into the record again?
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on September 22nd, 2020 at 6:30 PM, which was the original hearing date, via Zoom webinar for the purpose of establishing a mixed-use village district bylaw to create conditions for property development standards that offer a mix of housing, civic uses, and commercial uses, which meets the needs of the town of East Long Meadow. Information relating to this bylaw is available for review by the public on the town's website, www.eastlongmeadowmay.gov. Please click the following link to join the webinar. For the council, Jean R. Quagletti, clerk of the council.
Mike, point of order?
Ralph, please.
Just curious on number seven. Was there no communications, correspondence, and announcements? Because we jumped from number six, approval of minutes, to public hearing. I would just make a motion that we take public hearings out of order only to continue after the public hearing with the communications, correspondence, and announcements, unless there isn't any.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, and we'll roll call vote this as well. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you. So the applicant for this public hearing is our planning board. And they have addressed this on this subject matter more than once. So if there is no other information to be added, because this is a continuation of a public hearing. And I can check in the audience, make sure that a member is there. But like I said, if nothing's changed, I don't believe they'll have to make the presentation over again. Don, do you, Mackie, do you see anyone from the planning board? Is Russ Denver in the audience?
No, I don't see Russ. Yep, he is there. Anybody, I guess you could invite anyone who wants to speak, Mike, to raise their hand if that's appropriate for you.
Okay, I would ask Russ Denver, if you have something new that you'd like to add, that you feel is relevant, to raise your hand, and we'll let you in. And if not, we will work off the last presentation.
Okay.
And what I'm trying to do is bring up the attendees right now, and I'm not having a lot of luck here.
I see no hands.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes, you can, Don.
We have about, anywhere from now it's 12 up to 22 people following us on Facebook Live. Now, Facebook Live is on about a 10, 15-second delay. What I did is I put in the comments section of Facebook Live a link with the passcode so that the viewers from Facebook Live can be able to be in our audience. So I just wanted to share that in case, you know, this may be the only way they're getting this message.
Okay, thank you. So we're comfortable with the planning board with the presentation that's been made numerous times. And as I stated earlier, there is no new information. So what I would like to do at this point in time, and the public will have their chance to chime in, but I would like to continue where we left off. And we had certain subject matters that do require motions or we felt motions would be relevant. So if we look at item eight under our public hearing, I'd entertain a motion starting with A.
Sure, this is based on the last meeting, Mike. I would move to make the following change to the proposed mixed-use village district bylaw in section 5.3-B-4, transpose paragraphs A and B.
I will second that.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this subject matter? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll roll call vote this as well. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. The second motion, if we can continue along, I believe you're all working off the same sheet I am. So that would be a motion to change language again.
So Mike, if I may, through the chair?
Thanks, Tom.
Move, I move to make the following change to the proposed mixed-use village district bylaw in section 5.3-B-13B. Third line down, change compatible to comparable.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote again. Pat Henry?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you. Moving right along, our third motion. Would somebody like to present that?
I will, Mike.
Thank you.
I move to make the following change to the proposed mixed-use village district bylaw in section 5.3-B, remove the word "from."
I'll second that.
That motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing, no, no further discussion on this subject matter. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
And Pat Henry?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. I did want to make one comment here. So we are, we are working on our fourth motion. And I just, just wanted to let everyone know that obviously, motion four, caveats with motion five. So I would like a motion for, motion to move number four, please.
I'll do that one. I move to make the following changes to the proposed mixed-use village district bylaw. Add the following definition to section eight definitions. Gross floor area means the aggregate of the floor areas of all stories of a building or structure other than an attic or a cellar, excluding the floor areas of any private garages.
I will second the motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or clarification on that motion? Hearing and seeing, oh, Marilyn?
Just a quick question. I'm not sure about the spelling of the word "stories." I don't know if that's a unusual spelling. So, you know, I'm sure that that can be corrected.
We spent a half an hour, I'm exaggerating, just a little comedy here in our meeting. But myself and Mary and Jeanie, we committed that. And I believe the English Language Dictionary stipulates that that word in that capacity can be spelled either way, so.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Mary, or Jeanie, would you concur with that?
Yes, I would, and Ralph would too.
Mary's muted, but Jeanie.
Well, I will because it came out of a dictionary.
Thank you. Ways, the American English and the British.
We don't need to pull a dictionary out, we're good, right? So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. And we'll start the roll call vote with you.
Yes.
Marilyn's a yes. Donnie Anderson, please.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you all. Motion five, the caveat of four, please.
I move to make the following change to the proposed mixed-use village district bylaw in section 5.3-B-4B. Change the first sentence to read, "Total gross floor area devoted to commercial and business uses shall not be less than 210,000 square feet nor exceed 250,000 square feet of the total gross floor area of the mixed-use village development."
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. We'll open the floor for discussion. And Marilyn, I believe you have your hand up.
I'm just a quick question on the citing of this 5.3-B-4B. Now, didn't we just switch them in a previous motion to, wouldn't that be now A?
Yeah.
It would be.
So I guess that's, that's a correction I want to bring to the floor.
Okay. So that correction obviously would be made prior to voting. Any other discussion? Ralph?
You knew I had discussion, Mike.
That's what we're here for.
So I'm against switching this from a percentage to a specific square footage. This bylaw is supposed to be created for all locations within the town. If this bylaw, if a mixed-use development was to go in, let's say a Fenway Golf or even a Elm Crest, 210,000 square feet, in my estimation, is way over the top. I think those areas would be a lot more suited for more of a residential with a very little bit of commercial. Furthermore, if we go to, our bylaw right now stipulates that it is a minimum development of 40 acres. If we switch to exact numbers, and they come in with a 60-acre development or a 70-acre development, we're stuck with a minimum and a maximum square footage. If you, if you limit yourself to 250,000 square feet on an 80-acre development, let's say, you're at a less percentage than what we have now. I believe percentages is the way to go. We batted this back and forth on our subcommittee. I went back and I did some reviews at six different meetings. We talked about this. This was a hot topic. And it took us a long time to come down with these numbers based on how many units we're going to be on the parcel, you know, what our guesstimate on size of the units were, what would be a good compromise where it would fit in anywhere in the town. With that being said, we put this bylaw under special permit for a reason. This gives the planning board some room to say, you know what? In this section of town, you know, maybe 15% isn't good. We'd like you to see, see that bumped up more to 20, 25%. In this section of town, no, we don't want 25%. You've got to be down around 15. Under the special permit process, they have the right to do that. They can say it doesn't fit right. If we start narrowing this down and put certain amount of numbers and all in, we're just handcuffing ourselves. I'm just not for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I'm speaking under the assumptions that the buildable footprint of a 40-acre parcel is roughly 700, 720,000 square feet. And that the 210,000 and 250,000 square foot range is roughly equivalent to 30 to 35% of 720,000 square feet. So I think the percentage is still there, it's just couched in a different terms. I believe this range is too high compared to the Long Meadow Shops or Center Square Village. I also believe it's too high, given the shift we're seeing in working from home offices due to COVID, which will likely reduce the amount of office space that's going to be needed in a mixed-use project. I believe it's too high, given the empty space we have currently in town and the likelihood that many businesses might want to move into the new space, leaving even more vacant space on Maple and Shaker. I believe the percentage of commercial space should be primarily for the benefit of residents of the project, rather than for the Center Grill, Stacy's Cleaners, Coughlin's, Tudor House, or the Wandering Spirit move into the new space and become a magnet for Long Meadow and Enfield people with all the extra traffic that that might bring. I don't agree with speakers who say that a lower percentage would only help the developers. If the percentage is too high, and no projects are ever seen as economical by any developer, we all lose. If the percentage is so high that it attracts businesses that are not needed to serve the project's own residences, that doesn't help the residents. If the percentage is so high that developers must lower the rents to attract current businesses to relocate there, the town gains little. Bottom line, I agree, I don't think any number is the right number. It's a judgment call, and I see too many downsides with a very high percentage. The planning board and the council planning subcommittee argued for nearly two years and settled on a 15 to 30% range. I think we should respect that. I could be persuaded to up the percent to 20 or 25%, but I will vote against a minimum higher than that since I believe it could effectively kill any possible mixed-use development project in town. And I don't think that's what the town or the council wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
I echo both previous speakers. And I would be okay to bring a percentage up to as high as a base level as 20. But as Counselor Henry was mentioning, yes, we did, you know, go around this quite a bit. I think Counselor Page mentioned, I think, six times. It seemed like, seems like 12. But either way, I think giving the planning board the flexibility to work with a particular developer on a particular site, on a particular location, and affording flexibility in especially now in light of this transition of businesses moving more into home-based employees and so forth and needing less square footage space to have a base of operation. I'm quite comfortable with the, what the committee, subcommittee came out with, with 15 to 30%. And allowing the planning board to work with the developer. And plus, we have the safeguards of the, you know, of the council eventually through, you know, the efforts of the town manager approving the host community agreement at the end.
Thank you. I reached out and did quite a bit of work on this myself. And when we talk about high percentages, there is no number in here that reflects above 30%. If I look at the Long Meadow Shops, I see 100%. If I see the development down in East Long Meadow, the new development there, that is 100%. We had certain numbers on the floor last week. Ranges from, anywhere from, I think, 15 to 35%. But back to Pat Henry's, one of his comments was, we are changing this, we're changing it. This, whether we use a percentage or a number, as long as they coincide with each other, it's the same thing. So if we're talking 30% of 700,000 square feet, we're talking. we're talking 210. I'm sure everyone can do the math, and this is what delayed our, you know, vote last week, was the misinterpretation of numbers versus percentages. So if anyone has any questions on that, we'd be happy to clarify. I I do feel that we need X amount of commercial tenants in that building to complement the the project as a true mixed-use development. And I also feel that Ralph Ralph made a good statement, the statement pertaining to other sites where this could take place. But I would, I'm concentrating my efforts on this site because this is the site that's on our radar right now. And it would probably take, I would estimate, and I don't think too many people would push back, it could take five or 10 years to complete this project. So before another one comes to fruition, I would guess that this board's makeup would be different and the planning board's makeup might be different as well. And those, that bylaw could be amended if it better served a different location in town. I'm going to try to go in order here. And I'll start with Marilyn, I believe your hand went up first.
Thank you, Michael. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission weighed in on this, what did they say?
I'm going to defer that to Mary, and I believe the conversation is percentages versus square footage, which is the same outcome, it's just different language, correct?
You want me to answer that now?
Please.
Well, we did reach out, Bethany reached out. And it was really in the context of Ralph's proposal to add that definition of gross allowable floor space, I think that you raised at last month's meeting, Ralph, about inserting the definition. It was a subject of number four's motion tonight. And the person with whom we have our connection for that technical assistance didn't really have any experience in Massachusetts. It had experience with mixed village, mixed uses in Florida. But ultimately, the advice given to Bethany was that you can pretty much do what you want, there's no standard, there's no requirement, so that any particular town could enact a bylaw with the language that it saw fit for its own purposes. So there really wasn't any hard and fast definition or rule that they were able to provide us.
Thank you.
It's not much guidance, but that's what we got.
I I guess it brings me back to our discussion at the previous public hearing when there was the perception that if you're if you're using a percentage of the gross floor area and then you have a second level and a third level, that we would be dealing with, i- in a percentage situation, we would be dealing with huge amounts of required commercial or non-residential use. How has what we're talking about today changed how we felt at the last public hearing?
Mike, can I jump in and talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
So at the last meeting, I was basing everything off of the maximum lot coverage, the maximum size of the buildings. Since that time, I went back through, I reread the bylaw. And part of this is going to be based on our residential units. So we know for a fact, under this bylaw, you can have 12 units per acre. It's a 40-acre development, so you're looking 480 units. So with that, if you took each living unit and said it was 1,500 square feet, that would accommodate some of the one-bedroom, it would offset some of the three-bedroom, and I'm just using that as an example. You would come up with 720,000 square feet of gross floor area of the residential. So at 15% of that, you'd be looking 110,000 square feet of commercial. Again, these numbers aren't exact only because you still have to take the size of the commercial building into account on the site plan. But at 20%, you'd be looking about 144,000. And again, this is assuming that the average size of all the residential units is 1,500 square feet. I mean, I can adjust quickly on the go. And I don't know, I mean, does that sound like an appropriate size for an average of residential, 1,500 square feet? Or do you think it should be 2,000? I mean, I don't know. And every development's going to be a little bit different, but that'll give us a little bit more perspective than some of the numbers calculated on the other end of that. I don't see any any development going in where all the residential units are going to be 3,000 or 4,000 square feet. At that point, you're not going to have a one-bedroom unit at 3,000 square feet, so.
I just, I just, one question that nobody has a crystal ball, I mean, we can't, nobody knows exactly what somebody's going to want. People that I did talk to seem to feel that because they're living in either homes or condominiums that are similar would probably be looking at a minimum of 2,000 square feet. And that's because they want a multiple of rooms and certain sizes out of those rooms. But none of us can predict that. The way it comes back to me is we have, I think, approximately 696,000 square feet or 700,000 square feet. And we had percentages that equate to numbers that came into this suggested motion for discussion purposes only. And I'm myself, I can only say where I'm coming from, I'm working off a floor number. I will not argue with anybody or push back much against the cap because if, I would hate to see somebody limited, like a business that would come in. And if we, even if we capped this at 30%, and somebody came in, the last customer in, and said, now I can't bring my business in here because I need more. That's why I would err on on a greater number than than the floor. And I believe everyone understands what I mean. I wouldn't want to turn away a customer because the bylaw says you're short 300 feet. So we have to put what's left on the table there to try to make it work. So I see Pat with your hand up, so.
Yes, thank you, Mike. As the maker of this motion, I I want to point out that I assumed when I, my very first comment was, I'm assuming it's based on 700, 720,000 square feet. Those square footage ranges of 210 to 250 actually equate out to close to 30 to 35%. So they make it a minimum of 30 and a maximum of 35, a narrow range. And both numbers are accurate mathematically if you assume that 700,000 square feet and just divide the 210 into 720. So we are looking at 30 to 35, nothing, nothing lower based on this motion, which I do not support.
So I would like to ask, if we started with a top number, does anybody have any pushback on where they'd like to see this top number in terms of square footage? I'm going to give Don a chance to speak first, and then I'll come back to you, Pat.
Sure. First of all, I still support having that flexibility of 15 to 30. I don't support having hard numbers. And I also don't support customizing this bylaw with the people who are proposed developers for one particular site in mind. I'm sure Don Mackey and our subcommittee members have an earworm for every time that I looked in the camera at our subcommittee meeting and I said, remember, we're working on a bylaw, not on a particular project. So we have to be aware of that because the more we look at it as a particular project, the more we could be found going down the lines of spot zoning. And we do not want to do that. We want to create a good bylaw with the flexibility where a developer can work with our planning board and be able to try to put a project that meets the needs of all concerns.
Thank you. Pat?
I want to thank you, Mike, I just want to respond to your your question, which is, how do how do people feel about a high of 35? I would go back to previous speakers that mentioned over and over again that the, under the special permit, they would have the right to go to 50 if they thought it was appropriate, and if they thought this was a, an opportunity to build a strong commercial center around this mixed-use development. And that gives them the option to do that. So I don't feel strongly about, I don't feel strongly that a high number is important or critical. What's more critical, I believe, is the low number.
Well, I would agree with the low number. And I believe everyone here will because I believe we know that the developer will work off the low number. And and we will only run past that if he had a tenant that would, you know, that contemplated moving toward a direction where they needed more square footage to make their business work. So that's what this is about. And I would just remind everybody, and I believe everybody realizes, this, that's what we're here to do tonight. We're going to try to distinguish if you want a top number, we'll discuss a top number, but it's really about the floor. And it's about compromise because what could happen here tonight is that if somebody wins on a certain value, we still need a supermajority vote to adopt the bylaw. So I would suggest we all compromise and try to come out with a number that works if we plan on adopting. Because if we don't adopt, this goes back on the shelf until the planning board puts it forward again. And that can happen within a month's time, as long as it's put back on the table by the planning board. If it's not put back by the planning board, I believe we could be waiting two years to revisit it. But we're all here to get this right. And again, it's about trying to find the numbers that we are working with last time. So there are numbers out on the floor. I'll entertain more comment to see if we can come to a resolution. Marilyn?
First of all, a point of clarification. If the planning board endorsed the proposal, and they have, if for some reason it didn't pass, it can come back again at any time, it doesn't have to wait two years. The two-year period comes in if the planning board did not endorse the original proposal. So for clarification, the other part about the special permit, the the range is important. And as a a planning matter subcommittee, we were all over the place. Don and I wanted 30% initially, Connor wanted 10%, Sid wanted 12%, Ralph wanted 15. I mean, we really had no true hard number, and the decision was to leave it up to the council. So here we are. The recommendation of 15 to 30 was just based on what was thrown out there. So I don't, you know, it is what it is. But I wanted to clarify that. As far as a special permit, if you have a a minimum of 15%, yes, through the special permit, the the planning board could say perhaps, I want, we want to see a little bit more. But you can't do less than 15% because the bylaw is written that way. And you can, you can establish conditions, but you cannot do less than what, or more for that matter, the 30% if that were the issue, than how the bylaw is written. So I just wanted to clarify that. As for my own opinion, I was 25 to 30% a few weeks ago. I'm not in favor of the 30 to 35% as I'm hearing the discussion. We don't have a crystal ball, that's true. However, I do feel that this is a chance to put a development in our community that is unlike no other development in our area. And if if Long Meadow can fill and all of their stores are full at at their shopping plaza, which is basically about 100,000 square feet right now, the town center is full right now. There are no vacancies at the town center, is from what I understand, unless something happened last night. So I know that there, you know, there's a potential for this kind of use to attract a different kind of tenant. And, you know, we're all caught up in COVID right now, and that's all we can think about. A huge residential project is not what the town needs, it's not what the town ever asked for. And if we can't come in with some sort of a balance, you're not going to have my vote either, and it's not a threat, it's just a, it's just a realization. So that being said, I'd like to put 20 to 30, 20% to 30% on the table.
Pat?
I I believe.
Is that a motion to amend? I will second.
I believe it's a motion to amend, that's what I wanted to suggest.
Okay, I vote to amend the percentage for the ratio between the non-residential to the residential for 20% to 30%.
I'm going to second that motion.
Is there any other discussion? Don?
I support it. Makes sense to me, I could, I could, I think 20 to 30 is a reasonable number.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to make some notes here. So we have Marilyn and Don at 20 to 30.
But there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor, so now we have.
Amendment to that. If we pass that, then we can further discuss it.
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I second.
So we can, we can discuss those numbers right now, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Or the subject matter, and that's where I was going. Okay. So for me to be comfortable with this, if if you, if we're looking at a floor, we've got two there, my, I would, I would agree on a floor of 25% and a cap of 30%. And again, I'm letting everyone know, the cap isn't what's driving this with me. It's the, it's the bottom. And as Marilyn previously stated, we have two complexes that we just discussed that are 100% and they're both full. And I think 25% is a great compromise. We're coming down 5% from the 30 from the original suggested motion. And that's, that's where I, where I sit. Any other discussion? Pat?
What point of order, Mike? I I think the, what, the motion on the floor is 20 to 30. We can't discuss other options than 20 to 30 until we either pass this resolution or not, and then we revert back to the original. But I mean, the motion on the floor is 20 to 30. We could, we could, I believe we could recalculate that in terms of square footage, if somebody wanted to do that. So it would be something like 170,000 square feet to 210,000 square feet. But I don't think we can just have other people put in 25, other people put in 30, other people put in 17, while while the motion on the floor is specifically
I I would agree, Pat. And what what I'm trying to eliminate, but we still need to follow point of order, so you're correct, is because to adopt the bylaw, it's a supermajority vote, and I've already said this once, I'd like to get something done tonight, but if if we can't compromise on numbers and there isn't a supermajority of vote, then the the bylaw would have to be brought forward again, as I stated and Marilyn stated by the planning board.
So you're suggesting a straw vote?
What I'd like to do, what what I'd like to do right now, just in terms of clarity, is we have to pick a number to start with. So I'm going to pick 700, okay? Because these percentages mean nothing without us speculating on what the total would be. So if you take 700,000 and I multiply that times 25%, that would mean that 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 would, this 25% would represent 175,000 square feet. Is there anybody that would disagree with that?
I agree.
If not, I'm going to take the 700, and this one's simple.
So Mike.
At 20%, it would be 140,000 square feet as a, as a base, okay? So, Pat, you're right. There, we are, we do need to vote on the the motion that's on the floor, and that's 20 to 30%. So if there, is there any other discussion before we vote on that?
Mike, I just wanted to make a point, if you take 700,000, you divide that by 480 units, means the average size of each unit will be 1,450 square feet. Just for general, I know you had said earlier that you thought the average was going to be 2,000 square feet. So just so that you know, 700,000 divided by 480 units correlates to 1,450 square feet per unit. It's just a point of information.
But, right, but just to clarify, that would be if there was no commercial property because we didn't factor in how much of the 700 would be commercial.
Well, that means that each residential unit would go down in size.
Right. And I, and.
And you're saying it's going to go up. So what I'm saying is you've got more than 700,000 square feet, you're going to be 900,000 or above.
I didn't mean it was going to go up. I meant that people that I talked to, that the homes that they're living in right now seem to feel that 2,000 square feet in an apartment that they would move into might work for their lifestyle. But, Pat?
And that would put you at over 900,000 total square feet, instead of the 700,000 you're discussing.
Or, or less residential units.
Or different sizes.
There you-
I'm not convinced that an average is, I'm not convinced that an average is necessary. They can build whatever they want.
I agree. I just, we only-
I understand that.
One person has the floor.
For clarification purposes, we only have so much square footage to deal with. Some of it would be devoted, if 100,000 out of the seven was delegated toward commercial, then you have 600 left to be designed in any shape and form. If one of them was 4,000 square feet, then that determines, we all know that would determine how many units you would end up with in the end.
Exactly.
Okay.
Actually, no, that's not accurate. It's not accurate, because you have more square footage than that when you do a full lot coverage and you go up and gross floor area. So what I'm looking at is 12 units per acre, 40 acres, a maximum of 480 units. I mean, that's, that's written in the bylaw. I can pull up the section for you.
So how high do you want this, how high do you want, I thought, I, you know, I thought right now we're limited to 50 feet.
And you won't even be close to that.
We're all over it.
So, I mean, like I said, it's one of those where you, you know that the maximum you can do by the bylaw is 480 units. I mean it. Section, sorry, 5.3-B-5. Number B, maximum density of housing units shall be 12 per acre, based on the area of the entire development. So you have a 40-acre development, 12 units per acre, 480 units. So if you take the 480 units, and you multiply that by 1,500, you have 720,000 square feet.
But that's a maximum.
Right.
It's not a ma, that's a maximum number of units.
Yeah. They, they could build, they could build 400 larger units.
You're right. And that's what, that's why I'm trying to figure out, anything you do has to be on the maximum amount, maximum build-out amount. They could put 200 units in. Like I said, it, it's one of those where it's a guessing game. So you start with the maximum that they can put in. I mean, no development that's going to go in for $100 million is going to leave 100 units on the floor. They're going to try and build out as much as they can and sell as much as they can. But again, that was more for clarification purposes. We have a motion on the floor, I believe, for 20 to 30%.
We, there is a motion on the floor, and there is a second on the floor. So we need to vote on that before we can entertain another motion for somebody that would want either a lower number or a higher number. Okay?
Point of clarification, a mo, and help me with this, Pat, a vote on the motion only requires a majority vote. It's the, it's the vote on the entire bylaw that requires a super majority.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to roll call vote the percentages that are on the floor right now, which is between 20 and 30%. And if that was to pass, then it would mean, based on the 700,000 square feet, I'm going to convert it back to square footage for those viewing, we would be going from the proposed motion of 210 down to 140,000 square feet. So, thank God. We're, Don?
Yes.
Don, you're a yes, correct?
Infaticent, yes.
Okay. I'm on the top of the screen. I am a no. Pat Henry?
I'm a yes.
Kathy?
I am a yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
This is a, a very confusing debate here. And at this current time, 20 to 30, I'd say no.
And Ralph?
Yes.
So the motion passes, we have two noes and five yeses, is that correct?
Yes.
Did I, did I get everybody, you know?
You did.
I'm working off the screen here. I want to make sure everyone's vote got counted, correct?
Yes.
So we have a motion that just passed to adopt a provision for this bylaw between 20 and 30%. A floor of 20 and a cap of 30. Correct?
Yep.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Pat?
I think that's correct, Mike, but I think at this point, it is appropriate for any counselor who wants to revisit the vote or change, change the decision. This would be the time to do it.
Well, right, okay. Well, then we, we revisit it. I, I don't know how else to explain it, but we dropped our floor down from 210 to 140. I, I, I am not in favor of a floor of 20%. Don is in, in favor. Well, I don't want to speak for you. You're, you're staying with your yes, correct?
Me? Yes. I am staying with the yes, because in light, 20, 20% in to 30%, I think is a palatable range. I know the developer, and again, we're not voting on the project, I keep saying, would prefer 15%. And so I think 20 to 30% is, in light of what's been happening with COVID and businesses changing, I think it's a much more realistic figure than it was even in the pre-COVID days. So I think 20 to 30, and would be a, with a lot more manageability with the, the planning board and the developer. So my answer is, is yes. I mean, obviously, I would love to have more businesses and stuff, but I have to become more of a realist. And as to what's been happening, and listening to people telling me that businesses could be moving, it's just going to be lateral moves from one part of East Long Meadow to another part of East Long Meadow. So to answer your question, again, my answer is still yes.
Okay. I don't believe I need to give a statement here, but I, I will, based on my answer is no on the 20%. I feel we have a very unique product. I see other, other businesses in other communities at 100%. I feel that 25% really complements the piece, the, 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 the project in general here. And we didn't talk about commercial space much, but you could have one, one commercial activity come in there that could eat up 100,000 square feet of that, such as a rec.
This limit is 25.
Right.
Pardon?
The bylaw limits the largest entity at 25,000 square feet.
Right.
Only have one of those.
Right.
Oh, one, one, okay, one rec. Okay, so one, one piece could occupy 25,000 square feet. So, but I, I don't really see the vote, the vote changing much. I'll go through it one time again. I believe this bylaw is going to, uh, you know, it's the, it's going to pass this particular motion that's on the floor. So Don's a yes, I'm a no. Pat Henry?
Well, we've already voted.
No, that was on the amendment.
On the floor. You, you, you asked if, if we want to change it, this is the time to do it. So I'm giving everybody a chance based on other information. If we don't feel it's necessary, then the bylaw passes.
So Mike, a little further discussion?
Sure. Okay.
I just want to point out to you that as far as this particular development on 330 Chestnut goes, the planning board could still say, even though we have a 20 to 30% range, because it's under special permit, they could go to the developer and say, because you're taking industrial garden park zone, we feel as though you should be at 25 to 30% commercial. They have the right to do that. So, so by voting for a 20 to 30% doesn't necessarily mean that this particular development is going to be stuck at 20%. That's the range that they have to be within. And it's up to our planning board to look at the site plan and say, hey, wait a minute, we think this should be a little bit more, or you know what, 20% is fine. And then it's up to the council at the very end with the host community agreement to agree on it.
But they can't move the needle any further south than the 20%.
Exactly.
Okay. So we've all voted. Does anybody have a different, a change in their vote before? Or any further discussion?
For the chair?
Okay. Pat first, and then Tom.
Yeah, I, just for clarification, when I suggested that the numbers could be reopened again, that would be with a counselor making the recommendation and a second, and then we would have to agree to reopen it. As I understand it, I don't see that happening. So what I see now is we are voting on the motion to adopt the 20 to 30%. To adopt the, what, what do we call this? The change, change the sentence to read total floor area shall be 140 to, 210.
No.
No?
It'll, it'll be 20 to 30%.
Right. Yep.
It won't be a specific number. It will be a percentage.
I'm gonna follow, follow the order. Tom, do you still have a question? Or a comment?
No, I, I believe my question's been answered. And I'm still, I, we're, we've been talking about commercial, and, and I'm stuck on that from the conversations. But I'm more concerned about the residential. But I think Ralph had mentioned that already, that there's a maximum of 12 units per acre.
Absolutely.
So this would be based off of the 12 units per acre. So they would first have to meet that standard, that requirement of 12 units per acre, and then be based at 20 to 30% off of that number as they build.
So through the chair?
Please, Ralph.
The 12 units per acre is a maximum number of residential units that they can build. So the 20 to 30% is the size of all the buildings. So if the residential is 700,000, then you look at 20% of that, and that's the maximum amount of commercial space you can have. Does that help?
It, it helps. I, I'm just, I'm concerned about the population. I'm concerned about the number of apartments and the growth in our town of residential properties. I mean, we're talking 480 units max. That's 960 people on a minimum, with two people per apartment, which is not uncommon. And it could be three or four. So that's 10% of our population. And, and that's where I'm hung up, in addition to the, the number of floors. I, I mean, 12 acres, 12 per acre, does that a limit? Does that limit the 50 feet back down to maybe three stories?
Does, doesn't change the height. But Tom, for your point, we were also concerned. So the initial petition that came in three and a half or four years ago was requesting a maximum of 800 units on a 40 acre. Then they cut it down to 600, and then our subcommittee suggested 12 per acre, which drops it to 480. So we didn't cut it in half, but we cut it by what, 40% of what they actually wanted. I think that brings it a little bit more reasonable than what they had. I mean, 800 units would have been absurd. That, they couldn't have voted for that. But, I mean, that gives you a general idea of, they started up here, and we kept whittling them down, just like on the commercial percent. They were talking 5%. By the time it got out of subcommittee, we were up to 15%. And tonight, we're up to 20%. So, you know, we're asking right now for four times what they wanted, which-
Kathy?
I feel like we're going around in circles again. And I want to echo what Ralph said a few minutes ago, that beyond this evening, and we're trying to create a bylaw that is good for the town. It doesn't have to be good for the developer. And not that you want to enter an arrangement where you begin on adversarial footsteps, but we have the protection of the planning board when they, under special permit, when they go through site plan review. And I sincerely hope, if our planning board members have not followed every single one of the segments of these public hearings, that before they undertake a review of a potential developer's application, they spend the time to revisit all of this, so they understand the anguish, if you will, that the seven of us are enduring to get this right. And secondly, that host agreement, host community agreement. We have the advantage there through our manager, as well as the seven of us, to make that as tight and appealing to the residents as possible. So I, I feel like if we just keep badgering a number around here, we're going to end up the night at 10 o'clock like the last time. And not that I'm an advocate of rushing through to get something done, but I feel like right now, we're just chasing ourselves around the pole. And I would advocate for putting some faith in the, the other piece of the process here that the planning board has. And, and know that they, they're compelled to do their due diligence. And the, the safety net, the second safety net of the host community agreement.
Thanks. Pat?
Question for the chair. Are we discussing the next motion already? Are we discussing the move to accept the bylaw? Is that what's on the floor? Because I think we've already agreed and spoken, voted on the prior. And we're, we're, we're looking at 20 to 30%, however you want to phrase it, whether it's 140,000 square feet to 2. We're, we, we have an agreement, we have a vote, and so we either need to have two counselors reopen that, or I think we need to move forward to the next vote, to the next motion.
I, Kathy?
No, I would absolutely echo what Pat has said. We've, we've, five to two, we've approved the range of 20 to 30%. And so we should be able to move to the next piece of the motions.
I, I, I would agree 100% as well. We, we voted, and I, I just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable, because I, maybe I misinterpreted, but it, it sounded like, was there an opportunity because of the confusion between percentages and numbers? So, but anyway, discussion's finished. We have voted. We are ready to move to the next. I just, just for clarification purposes, and hopefully it helps Jackie a little bit, the amendment to the motion that was read, we had 210,000 square feet and 250. Is, we, we are going to, and correct me if I'm wrong, the 210 is going to change to 20%. And the 250 is going to change to 30%. Is that correct?
I, I would, I would agree with that, although it could be phrased as the 210 becomes 140, and the 250 becomes 210.
That's not what we voted on.
Same thing. Which, what did we vote on? The percent?
Yeah, 20%.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. I withdraw.
Basically, my understanding of the vote is just a, a simple that 5.3-B-4 new A, the number 15 simply is replaced with 20, and everything else is the way it has printed. Is that everyone's understanding who voted? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. That motion's been presented, seconded, voted on, and passed. So the next motion, I'm ready for, on that to be presented, and that is motion to accept or adopt. And prior to that, Don, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, just so the public's aware. We have about seven people on Facebook, 21 in the audience. They're, they understand that they're not commenting on this today, correct?
Well-
Well, it is a public hearing.
That's what I wanted to be clear on before we just wrapped it up, just to make sure that, you know, I'll defer to our parliamentarian through the chair, Mr. Pat, through the chair.
My perception is that now that we've discussed these four motions, that I would open it up for public comment prior to having the next motion read, that's where I was headed. But Pat?
I'm not, I'm not sure that's appropriate, Mike. I think you closed the public portion of the public hearing two meetings ago, with the only item on the agenda being council comments and council discussion and council vote. The public has had numerous opportunities to weigh in in the first two meetings. The public has had numerous opportunities to weigh in in the first two meetings and we closed that session, I'm almost 100% sure, in favor of council discussion only.
Kathy?
I would rubber stamp that 100 times. When we continued it from, where are we? From November 10th. It was because we were in this phase of council discussion and vote at that point, and I agree with Pat. The public input, with the exception of Russ Denver, who as planning board chair can, you know, update the council under information, but we're still in that, we're only in the council discussion and voting stage. As I read Robert's rules.
Okay, Marilyn?
And I'm confirming, I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting, the public portion of the public hearing was closed.
That's, that's great because this is a continuation. So the continuation was with the council comments and all the comments from the comment, from the council were correlated into motions. We've gone through the motions and voted on them. So that being said, I will entertain a motion to adopt or accept.
I'll make a motion to, I move to accept the proposed mixed-use village district bylaw with the amendments approved this evening with the, I think that's about it. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made and seconded and.
Further discussion? Do we need to close the public hearing before we, do we need to close the public hearing before we take our vote? Because this was a continuation of a public hearing. So should we close the public hearing and then take a vote on the project?
That would be my suggestion, but I'm, I'm not going to close the public hearing without a motion on the floor. I'd like a motion to close and a vote to close the hearing. Pat?
I would observe that the public should have the right to observe our vote before we close the public.
They will.
I could be wrong.
That would be, that would be within the public meeting. Public hearing is open so that the public can put input in. If we closed the public input two meetings ago, we could have closed a public hearing two meetings ago and continued with just a public meeting.
I would agree and respectfully, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. And then we would vote. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Okay.
Okay.
Did you motion, Ralph?
I made the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Don?
Yeah, since my motion was on the floor and seconded, I'm going to again withdraw the motion and then depending on the results of this vote, then I will reintroduce it.
I'll withdraw my second as well.
That way we don't have two motions flying into each other.
We're getting there. So this requires a roll. First thing we're going to do right now, just so it's clear to everybody, is we're voting to close the public hearing. I'll start with myself at the top of the page. I am a yes. Don?
Yes.
Pat?
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, we can consider the public hearing closed. Now I will entertain a motion to accept or adopt.
I move to accept the proposed mixed-use village district bylaw with the aforementioned approved changes made this evening.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this subject matter? Hearing and seeing none, I'll start to vote here at the top. I am a yes. Don?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
The motion passes, we have adopted a bylaw. Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you.
Yay.
So I would like to jump back to a motion that was on the floor earlier to open up the subject matter of communications and correspondence and announcements. And I would ask Jeannie if we have anything.
We do not.
Okay. Moving along here, under orders of the day, licensing matters. If everybody can find that information. I might entertain a motion on that subject matter.
Mike?
Yes, Cap?
We have, the first thing is the citizen initiative petition for Mr. Sri Incorporated doing business as countryside store. Is that what we're discussing right now?
Motion defined as A1. Do you have that? Do you have that motion, Kathy?
Yes, I do, but we haven't had any, do you want to just, can, maybe Jeannie can give us an overview of how this petition comes, the process once a petition comes before the clerk of the council.
I think that's fair and then I'd like a motion on the floor in a second before we discuss, but Jeannie can give us the demographics.
Okay. Sure. So Article 8, Section 3 of the Charter is about citizens initiative petitions. And we got a request back in July to request an additional liquor license off premise, all alcohol off premises, excuse me. And the petitioner went through all the correct stages that the charter outlines. Didn't come forth with all the right signatures at the right steps. And I conferred with the town attorney that all the right steps were taken according to the charter. So at this point, it's up to the council now to act on the petition and whether they want to grant the additional all alcohol off premise license, which is one above the quota that's given by the ABCC to the town based on population. And I believe that the attorney is here with the applicant, if you have any questions too for them.
Okay.
I've got a question for Jeannie, if it's okay.
Absolutely.
So Jeannie, if I understand this petition correct, the petitioner is asking the town to petition the state to receive an extra liquor license.
Right. The request starts with the town.
So his request is for us to go to the state and request another liquor license.
I believe once the, if the, if the request was approved by the council or through a ballot question, it would then go to the state level.
But it would be us requesting another liquor license.
Right.
Because the petitioner can't request a liquor license, only the town council can ask for one.
Right. And I've outlined the steps of what would be next.
Marilyn, do you have a question for Jeannie?
I just, I just feel like we need to talk about this a little bit more. I've done some research myself before we go to a motion. I'm, I mean, I.
For clarification purposes and education on the motion, that's acceptable. Please come forward.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious, we're asked, we're being asked to accept or deny this request. I have not seen the petition, so I don't know what the petition says. But I have, my understanding is the request is for an all alcoholic.
Off premise.
Off premise, which is a package store license.
Correct.
Okay. And for a specific location. So my question is, if we go through this, if we, if we don't deny it and it goes through and the state says it's okay, is it an automatic assumption that this license will then be issued to this applicant?
The intent of the applicant has to be known.
What is the intent of the applicant? Do we know?
We don't know, but the attorney and the applicant are both here to answer any questions. If the council does deny it, they can come forth with more signatures, up to 500 signatures. And if they do that in time, they can get on the ballot for the June election and then the voters can vote.
May I continue, Mike?
Sure.
Okay. The, the intent is important. I don't know what we're hearing, but the intent is important because I'm, you know, this particular location is under special permit with our planning board for a pre-existing non-conforming use as a convenience store since 19, well, the convenience store has been in there since 1942. The special permit was 1987 and it was a special permit, Section 6 finding for the alteration or modification of a pre-existing non-conforming use in the residential zone for a convenience store. And that's when the convenience store was modified into the structure that it is right now. The special permit defines it as a convenience store. That's the pre-existing non-conforming use in a residential zone. So if we're looking to take a package store license, and that's why I need to know the intent and make it a package store, that's not the pre-existing non-conforming use. That's another use and I'm not sure, quite frankly, I don't believe that it would be applicable in this case. It's a convenience store in residential zone because it's, it's pre-existing. It's not a package store. So if it's, is it important to have this discussion before we vote to deny or accept? I would also want to hear from the attorney to find out what the intent of the owner is of this, of this business going forward.
Okay. I would suggest at this point in time, if we don't have any more questions for Jeannie right now, that we put a motion on the floor and second it and then we can open it up for discussion. And then we can convert them from a, you know, bring them into our meeting as a panelist, if you will. So I'd entertain a motion to open this topic up for further discussion and involve the attorney and the participant. Kathy?
Well, that motion falls to me, but you know, we only have two actions here. To accept the initiative petition, deny it, or probably a third, take no action. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm comfortable just accepting or denying or taking no action until we hear from the folks who are representing countryside. And for the public's benefit, we have the backup information that Jeannie has very succinctly outlined. But the public can't see what's in our packets here. But if we approve this petition, then on behalf of this business, we are petitioning, we go forward with an act to authorize our Senator Lesser and Representative Ash to endorse this. And then each of those gentlemen have to take it to their various committee, the House Committee and the Senate Committee. And if both, so underline if and both are approved, then the petition goes to the governor for final approval, a process that nothing in government works quickly. And I suspect timing may not be in the favor of any petitioner at this point because we're so overwhelmed with public health and budget processes that it's noted here that that approval from any governor can take up to two years. And then if it found favor with the governor, then the original business has to decide what their next move would be. Are they going to surrender their beer and wine or, or not? And so I just feel as though I want to hear from the attorney and I want the public to understand as well as I'm sure the attorney has advised his client that this is a, this doesn't happen overnight just because we might approve this this evening. We're talking months and months and months here. And it could be stopped at any point, it could be stopped short at any point if our legislators decide that in light of all of the compelling issues before the Commonwealth, that right now this isn't, the timing is not right and they choose not to support it. So I feel like I just want to hear a little bit more before I put that motion on the floor.
Okay, and that's not a problem. I just want to make sure there's no opposition. I mean, this is a subject matter that's obviously has not come before us, at least during my tenure here over the last four years. I want to make sure everyone's comfortable, but I see your hand up, Pat, and after we speak to Pat, I don't have any problem with, I believe he's in the audience, Jeannie, before, before I acknowledge Pat, is the attorney's, is it Nick?
Yes, and I see his hand is up too.
Yep.
So I'm looking at this as well. I'm going to speak with Pat first. If there's no more questions from the council, it might be better to have Nick come in and he might be able to answer those unanswered questions if there's any more. So Pat, can we continue with you?
Thank you, Mike. It's, I agree with you. It's just good practice to have a motion on the floor before you have this kinds of discussion, especially bringing someone in. I think the problem is the way the motion, the way the draft motion was presented, it, the terminology might have been better to say move to accept than initiative petition. And I don't think anybody would object to that because then we could just vote it down if we, if that's where we go. But we, but we opened it up for discussion by moving it by, by a positive motion to accept.
Thanks. So that is another way approaching it and I'm going to, I'm going to, I don't believe there's any right or wrong in this situation. Would somebody want to amend the motion? To put a motion on the floor for a second for discussion purposes? Or if there's no opposition, I'll, I'll bring Nick in. I'm going to follow the order here, right? I'm going to come back to you, Pat. Kathy?
Pat makes sense there that we can, the motion should be done in the affirmative. And if after all of the discussion tonight and the input from our audience, we are not comfortable with this, then we simply vote no on it. So that said, I move to accept the citizen initiative petition for Armon Sri Incorporated doing business as countryside store for an act to authorize the town of East Long Meadow to grant one additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises.
Okay, I have, we have a motion and do I have a second?
I will second it.
The motion's been made and seconded. We're going to roll call vote this and keep this moving along. I am a yes. Don?
Yes.
Pat?
No, 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 I don't.
Oh, no. Open up the conversation, right? We're voting on the end result. Clear, because I'm not voting. Did I just miss something?
Yeah.
You did. You didn't miss anything. My mistake here. We have a motion on the floor and a second. And part of the discussion at this point, I'm going to, I see his hand and I'm going to ask Don Mackey to allow Nick into our meeting. Convert him to a panelist, please.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Nick, and I'm going to, everyone's going to have an opportunity to answer any questions that they might have, but would you like to make a brief presentation?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, at the Zoom and it looks like my camera's off.
Yep. Do you have, do you have video?
Yeah, but it's fine. I'm not going to go through the process and try, oh wait, here we go. There we go. So first of all, thank you for having me. I appreciate all of the spirited discussion that's, that's gone on. Good evening. My name's Nick Amanti. I am an attorney with Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law right in East Long Meadow at 46 Center Square. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Armon Sri. They're proposing that the town approve the citizen initiative petition for the issuance of the addition, for an additional license to sell it, to sell an all alcohol beverages not to be drunk on the premises at countryside store located at 334 Summers Road. As, as you guys have discussed, an approval really goes and asks the. representatives to issue, to allow the town to issue an additional liquor license. Basically, if this is approved, we still have to go through the same process, the ABCC approval, the local town approval. So you guys kind of have total control. And I know that it isn't that common, you're right, for this side of the state, but this is really common actually for out near Boston because all those towns, all their liquor licenses, they're all taken. And I don't know if you remember, but this is the same, exact same thing that happened with Spalletto's, which is now the Center Square Grill. We had to go through the same process in the town of East Long Meadow and that eventually turned into the Center Square Grill, except here, the petitioner is asking to sell liquor as a package store instead of an on-premises pouring license. The petitioner already has a beer and wine license, so all this would really do was allow for, in addition to his beer and wine, for them to be able to sell liquor on the premises. So with me, I hope with me is Mr. Anil Patel, who he's the owner and the operator of the store and he'll be available as well for any additional questions. Really the background, right? The Countryside Store, it's a small business in the community. It's been located at 334 Summers Road since 1942. There's current liquor licenses granted to sell beer and wine and it's, they only sell it in 235 square feet of a 2,000, you know, approximately 2,000 square feet of the store. So it's not, it's not even that big of a section of the store. And just, they'd really like to sell in addition to the beer and wine is liquor. And the reason for this is because the petitioner has, you know, 10 to 20 people every day come in and ask him why he can't sell liquor. I know with COVID and with the recent restrictions on vaping and menthol cigarettes, that they've really taken a toll on convenience stores. And this would really, you know, help the petitioner, you know, small business in the community stay open. Like I said, Mr. Patel is here to answer any direct questions you may have about his background. I believe we went through this. Brian Fitzgerald from our office was in front of you all back in January, kind of a similar process, I believe, with the transfer of the store. Mr. Patel has been working at the Countryside Store for almost a decade now. He purchased the store, I believe it was around January this year, so he's been, he's been the owner now for almost a year. Him and his wife are both tip certified. They're the only employees currently because of everything that's going on and they're there 50 plus hours a week. You know, every, every time the store is open, one of them's there. The operation of the store, it's not going to change at all. Everything's going to be the same. The only thing that's going to change is in addition to beer and wine, which they already sell, they're just going to be able to sell liquor. So we submitted this citizen initiative petition pursuant to the town charter. This petition was reviewed by the town attorney who stated, based on his review of the petition, the charter and the applicable state law, it was him's opinion that the measure as proposed may be lawfully proposed by the initiative process and it may be lawfully adopted in its present form by the town council. As part of the process, we're required to obtain 100 signatures from registered voters and the town attorney, or I don't know if it was Jeannie or the town attorney, needed to verify that there was 100 signatures from registered voters. I know we turned in several hundred signatures. I know that over 100 of them were verified as registered voters. So I know in the town, there's a significant, at least significant desire for this location to sell liquor in addition to its beer and wine. I would just ask if the council find everything in order. I'd respectfully ask the council to approve the citizen initiative petition as presented and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Nick. That's what we'll do. I'm not sure that your client needs to be brought in right at this point in time. I'll decide that after we have, the council has a chance to ask you any questions that they might have. Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Nick, for the additional information regarding your client. You mentioned 235 square feet is currently dedicated to the sale of beer and wine.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, because I've been in the store. So what you're saying is it's that 235 square foot area that would be dedicated for this new license?
I think we'd have to discuss that with my client. Right now it's 235 square feet. If there was to be a change in the premises, that would have to come before you and you would have to approve that because there would have to be a new, a plan showing exactly where the alcohol is going to be, going to be sold of the premises as a part of the ABC, the ABC approval process. So you would see that if there was any changes.
My question is, the primary use is a convenience store. The primary use is a convenience store, that's the pre-existing non-conforming use since 1942, is a convenience store. You're located in the residential zone and are you telling me that there's a possibility that the approach may be to somehow alter that and that it wouldn't be a convenience store and that you will be dealing with a package store?
So I really don't think the use would change much. They already have a beer and wine license. I know they are a convenience store. They're still going to be a convenience store. I think just adding liquor would make them a little more convenient to certain clientele that would allow them to have a little additional revenue, which would be nice, you know, nice for the client. And I don't believe much would change besides adding liquor to an already existing beer and wine license.
They would not have the beer and wine license. They would have to give that up.
Yeah, so.
I guess, I guess where I'm going with this is if I'm going to vote on this tonight, I need to know that it, that the alcohol is going to be limited to the sales area where the beer and wine is limited to now and that the primary use, which is the only approved non-conforming use in the residential zone, is a convenience store. If you're, if there's a focus on a package store, that sort of changes everything as far as I'm concerned because the special permit that was taken out in 1987 was to alter and modify the structure of a pre-existing non-conforming convenience store in a neighborhood and it's owned residential A next to a church and it would not be a location, good location for a package store.
I mean, I think you'd have to ask my client, I didn't discuss him about changing the premises at all, if he's okay with keeping it at the 235 square feet.
Okay.
That's fine.
I know how, I know how I need to vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Kathy, you have a question for Nick?
I do. Thank you, Nick, for that explanation, but I think in a simplistic way, if I can. Right now you say that Mr. Patel has about 235 square feet for the beer and wine product. If we grant this process and ultimately it's granted that he has the, is able to sell hard spirits and he stays within that 235 square feet, it, what you can, what I can deduce from that is that he's got to have less stock of beer and wine. The converse of that is to include this now in the repertoire, he's got to increase the amount of space in that footprint to accommodate the new liquor stock. And then we start edging into, you know, how much now are you a convenience store? If you have to add another 100 or 200 square feet to do that, are you not going to carry bread products? Are you not going to carry chips? And you get, you get what I'm saying. And then to me, my thinking goes to where Marilyn is, that, well, you're not really the convenience store that originated back in 19, what did you say, Marilyn, 42? It doesn't matter. It's a, it's a convenience store of longstanding. And the closer that footprint comes to being more alcohol, at some point, the name Countryside Store does not really express the mission of the seller. So I just want to say that I have some trepidation around, you know, what, where this could lead.
I understand where you're coming from. And like I said before, this has to go through local approval again. If it's, this is just the first step, right? So this would, this would bring it up to the state legislature. If the state legislature approved it, then they'd have to go through the entire ABCC process again. They'd have to come back in front of you. You would see exactly where the alcohol would be. You would be able to accept or deny it at that point and it'd go through the exact process as every other liquor store from that point.
Pat, I noticed you had your hand up. Do you have a question?
My question was, was kind of simple. It's just, I hear various people saying that they have to come before us if they want to change that 235 square feet or 235 feet of sales space for alcohol. So to me, that, that, that means it's not an issue because they have to come before us. We get a chance to approve it or not at that point in time. So I don't, I don't know, yes, I don't know why we're following down that path.
Ralph?
So if I read the motion, the motion was to grant one additional liquor license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises. That would be granting a license that we don't have.
No, 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 no.
My thought process is that the town itself should go to the state on its own and seek an additional liquor license if we so choose because it's the town's liquor license. The petitioner, I believe, would be petitioning us, the council, to go and do that. I think that's really what the petition is, is to make the town council go and seek another license. And I think once the town does it, then the petitioner applies for the license. I just, I think, I think the motion's incorrect. I don't have an issue with our town seeking an additional license based on our population and stuff, but to seek one specifically for a store of which we're not even sure that they would be able to take it or not because of different issues doesn't seem correct.
Thanks, Ralph. Pat?
Through the chair, I read the motion to accept the petition, which is lawful under our charter, to accept the petition for an act to authorize the licensing, not to grant any license, but it's an act to, to accept the petition. So I disagree.
So maybe I'm reading the motion incorrectly, but it specifically says grant one additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises.
That's what the petition is for. It's not what we're approving. We're approving.
No, that's our motion.
The acceptance of the petition that would do that.
I'm sorry. Kathy?
Just, this is how I see it. If we vote yes on the motion on the floor, then the ball drops in our lap to get with our legislators and convince them that they should, on our behalf, represent us in committee and before the governor to say, you know, there's not enough licenses of this type in East Long Meadow and our, for our, on behalf of our constituents, we want you to give us one more. And if all that becomes yeses all the way up the ladder, then it, then Countryside Store can apply for it. They can't do anything right now until all of those things occur. And we all know that, I mean, that's a long, long road for, for any petitioner to, or us even to find success with that. It's going to take months.
Marilyn?
Just another comment with respect to the kinds of licenses that we have and utilize within our community. Are we sure that this is an area that we, I mean, I understand why the request has been made, but are we sure this is a need that our town has for another package store license? Would we be open to considering, now with the bylaw that we just created and the possibility that we will have the potential of a large mixed-use village district within our community and more than likely another restaurant or some eating establishment at that location, would we want to consider if we're going to go through these hoops to request a restaurant, restaurant non-alcoholic beverage license instead of a package license? I'm not trying to slight the applicant, but we're being asked to make this decision based on a petition of customers. And I think as a community, we need to figure out what we really need. Thank you.
So, sorry.
I was just, before, is there any, does anyone else have any other questions for Nick? Okay. Hearing and seeing none at this time. Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to point out that I know it seems a little uncommon, right? Because it is a little uncommon for this side of the state, but there's been 17 of these petitions this year just for alcoholic beverage licenses that have been approved by the Massachusetts Legislature. And that's actually lower. I was surprised when I looked it up because it's typically from my, my experience, it's been higher in previous, previous years. So it's not an uncommon request and I don't think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think this would, would take away from going and requesting a restaurant pouring license. This is a totally different type of license. This is, this is an, you know, an, on, a not-to-be-drunk-in-on-premises license and pretty much, they're all taken up in the town of Long Meadow. So it's not a restaurant license, it's not a pouring license. It wouldn't take away from that quota. It would take away from, from the not-to-be-drunk-on-premises quota.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Ralph?
Mike, I just, I want to follow up with Jeannie once more. I mean, from what Kathy was saying is this petitioner is petitioning the council for the council to go and seek an additional license. So, I mean, if I'm looking under if the council approves the petition, the last thing says the petitioner would then have to decide if they were going to surrender or transfer their current license. If I understand correctly, it's the town that's applying for, asking the senator to give us another license and then they would have to apply for the license. So they wouldn't have to decide to give theirs up or not. They would have to apply for the license. Then if we chose to give it to them, at that point they have to do it. But I just want to make sure that the petitioner is only asking the council to act on this with the state, that it would be us going forwards and doing it.
Correct. That's, that's correct. If this was, if this was passed by the state, we would have to go, come back before you and go through, go through the entire licensing process. If at that time you decided to approve or deny it, we would, we would be denied and we'd be in exactly the same place we are, we are today.
Thanks, Nick. Okay. I think if there's no further discussion, we're ready for it to roll call vote this and everyone realizes that the motion on the floor has been amended from the draft in front of us. Ralph, I'll start with you.
Okay, I think if there's no further discussion, we're, we're ready for a roll call vote this. And everyone realizes that the motion on the floor has been amended from the draft in front of us. Ralph, I'll start with you.
So Mike, I just want to clarify. If we vote yes, that means we're approving the petition. If we vote no, that means we're denying it.
That's my, that's my interpretation of the amended, the amendment that we made to the motion that was presented by Kathy, correct?
Just, just wanted to verify that then. I'm a no.
Okay. Tom?
No.
Pat?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Marilyn?
No.
Don?
No, but I just got to make a quick comment. I do think our licensing subcommittee should look into, based on what Marilyn said, the needs as we move forward, since we know it's a slow process, of adding additional licenses by us for both restaurants and perhaps package stores. You know, that there may be a need, but in this particular case, in this particular circumstances, I'm voting no.
Okay, thank you. I, I agree with your comments, Don, and I am a no as well. Motion passes. Thank you.
Oh, the motion's.
I'm sorry, the.
Motion is denied, Mike.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next under licensing matter, matter is approval of the twenty twenty-one license renewals. You have an Exhibit A, and I would accept the motion to approve the license renewals for twenty twenty-one.
Through the chair. I, I, I would like to, after discussion and review with the documents, there are a number of inconsistencies that I found that should not be voted on and approved.
Okay, so we can take that up under discussion after we have a motion on the floor?
Okay, so a move to approve the license renewals for twenty twenty-one is presented in Exhibit A contingent upon each license complying with their annual building inspection if required and submitting the total renewal fee.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Now we can open up for discussion. And is there any discussion on this subject matter? Kathy, we'll start with you.
Thank you. This could just be, this is a very complex. And thank you, Jeannie and Jackie, for putting all this together and, and keeping it straight for us. But this is a seven-page Excel sheet document listing all of the various licenses that the town is required to issue for various businesses. But as it relates specifically now to alcohol, I noticed that the beer shop is still listed, Jackie, uh, Jeannie, in the spreadsheet. And I thought back a couple of months ago, we transferred the license from the beer shop, which I now understand to be closed, to the Heritage Plaza Liquors or how, whatever their DBA is.
Heritage Plaza, right. So I did send that out to the beer shop, the renewal, back in October. Because I was still researching. I think at that time, their doors weren't closed yet. And I had some conversation with Tom about this too. So I know that they're not going to be opening their, their doors, the Heritage Plaza, until after the first of the year. But perhaps you're right, that should have gone to them. Well, I'm not sure. Maybe I'll have your advice on that as the local licensing authority should. They're not even operating yet, but they've got the transfer license. So should the renewal be to the Heritage Plaza?
If.
Sure.
There's crossing line dates and I wasn't sure.
At, right now, if it were up to me, Mike, if I can speak.
Go ahead, please.
I, I wouldn't, I would just delete the beer shop from the spreadsheet. And when it, time comes around that Heritage Park Plaza is ready to open its doors, then you add them to the, the spreadsheet.
Okay.
We already have approved their existence and the transfer of the licenses. But to leave the beer shop on there now, no one, I mean, we know the backstory.
Right.
But I, I think it might be more accurate to just remove the, the data around the beer shop.
Okay, especially when the motion encompasses the whole spreadsheet, so.
Right, that's, that's my only concern about that. Taking it as just one fell swoop and there's, there are.
I might be able to make an exception. You know, we could make an exception to the motion for the twenty twenty-one renewals exempting the beer shop, if that would be accepted.
Well, I think when we finish with discussion, if there's more than, however many we.
There is a solution.
Right.
Yeah.
Approve the motion as is, with the exception of enlist the people, the things that we aren't ready to act on.
That's where I was going after the discussion's complete. Jeannie, I'll be with you in one second. Tom?
There, there are at least one more on the list that I, I think should not be for consideration. I mean, I, myself, living down this end of town, have visited and frequented these locations. And the beer shop is empty. They're gone. They're, they're totally moved out. The new location is in the process of being built out for this, the, the one we just granted. So they're actually the license holder. If my, if I understand correctly, a couple of months ago, they came before us and there was, it was an issue with the transfer. And we agreed to have them transfer the license to that new location. So the beer shop is not on the table as far as I'm concerned. Also, Figueroa's is still on there. Why is Figueroa's on there? Figueroa's came to us, there was a Mexican restaurant, I can't remember the name, that applied for the license, which we granted them. So they're, they're on there.
Okay, I'm going to let Jeannie, I'm going to defer to Jeannie. Go ahead, Jeannie.
So Figueroa's still has the license. And the Mexican restaurant is going to come forward after the first of the year with a brand-new application for transfer, since it was returned with no action from the A, B, C, C. And there was a lot of new changes to the, to the application. So Figueroa's is still the holder of that license. And in fact, I was told by the building commissioner that they passed their certificate of inspection, which is needed. So they're still the holder of the license, which is, and I, they've sent back their renewal fees and all the required paperwork.
Who, who's that, Jeannie? I'm sorry.
Figueroa's?
Figueroa's did. But Figueroa's is not operating as a restaurant. And according to A, B, C, C rules, they haven't operated for a couple of months, which means we can remove their license.
Kathy?
I agree with what Jeannie said. I understand what Tom, you're saying. But we also have Redstone Pasta, who has dutifully paid and kept up their license for three years, but has not opened the door yet. So if we're allowing that technically until the, the business, the transaction of the business for Figueroa's to the Mexican restaurant goes through. And I've talked with Jeannie a little bit about that. All indications seem to point to the fact that they will petition for some, they're going to come forward with some changes in what their application was, which requires a brand-new application. But I don't see any harm right now in Figueroa holding the license when we know this, this transfer to the new owners is just around the, the corner of the new year.
Ralph?
So Kathy, I heard this same exact line one year ago at this time, because I brought it up. And I was told within a couple of months, this transfer would take place. And that was all going to happen. Now we're a full year later. There's still no one in there. Even if they buy it and lease it or do whatever, we're probably looking another six months before they get in. I don't think someone should be holding on to a license and not operating. It's going to be going on two years. To me, that's just unacceptable. I would agree the same thing, I believe, with Redstone Pasta. We have other people that may want to move into town and use it or other businesses that could be using these licenses. As far as the beer shop goes, I would think that we would have sent the new owner the application or the renewal and that the new owner being truly approved by us to hold the license would be the one that would be up to paying it. And I would think that we would send that to them because they should pay it for the beginning of the year going forwards. I just had one other question. And again, this is just a point of knowledge. The Arbor Kids in East Long Meadow, they have a common victular license? What do they need the common victular license for? And it's just, it's more for my knowledge than anything.
Kathy?
Well, to, to Ralph's question about the Arbers, they're running a full-service childcare center, so they have to have the capacity to make and serve food.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Thinking.
I thought it was self-packaged and all that they gave them.
You know, under the pandemic, it may very well be, but they still have to be able to down the road.
That makes perfect sense. I just, I'm trying to think, a childcare facility, are they selling stuff on the side or something? I, I didn't know.
Okay. If there's no further discussion.
Mike, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I said I had more than one. And I, I echo Ralph's concern. As a member of the licensing committee, the subcommittee of the council, we, we have an issue with pocket licenses. And I, I'm, I'm totally against businesses holding on to licenses for a long period of time and not being used. And there is a process where we can pull those licenses in a very short time if they're not utilized and the business is not open. Well, Figueroa's is not open and they're not being utilized. So again, that reverts back to the town. In addition to that, there's a, a location which we just issued very short time ago, Zane's Smoke Shop. And I thought they were under some obligation to decide what they wanted to be when they grew up. A package store or a vape shop? Well, they're still operating as both and they're selling materials out of it, like t-shirts. I, I would vote that down as well.
I, I, thanks for your comment. I, I would ask one suggestion before we move forward. Seeing that we have a council meeting on December fifteenth, could we table this to the fifteenth and, and get all these unanswered questions resolved on the direction we want to take with these licensees? Would anybody move toward tabling? Jeannie?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that I could, I could, I could revise the sheet with whatever suggestions you'd want. But you'd have to vote on it by the fifteenth, for sure. Because that's your last meeting of the year. Heritage Plaza Liquors, as far as I understand it, by the building commissioner, we can't renew any liquor license without a certificate of inspection of the premises. And they don't have, they're not ready yet, Heritage Plaza. So I don't think I'd want to include that on the list. I'll delete the beer shop, but I don't think I'd want to include Heritage Plaza on the list yet. Figueroa's, I would still keep on because they still are the current license holders. And they did pass their certificate of inspection. They did give us the renewal fees. And Redstone Pasta, I think that's up to you on how you want to handle that. I know they already were given a, a warning or a heads-up on the policy. But as, as long as I know direction by the time this meeting ends and I can present the new sheet next week for final approval.
Well, my, my point is, if it's not time-sensitive, I would, I would table this and hand it back to the LOA to discuss these matters. And put, you know, it'll be, put it back on our agenda on the fifteenth and hopefully we can resolve. But Pat, I see your hand up.
I will make that motion, Mike. But I just want to remind the council that the License Commission and the council have agreed not to take any action on any pocket license until January. And then in January, we can, we have the right to call anybody in we want. And we can either revoke the license immediately or give them a reasonable amount of time. So I will, I will now make the motion, if you, if you like, Mike, to table this.
Okay, just help me with my memory here. If there was a motion on the floor, does that motion and, and the second need to be retracted before we put a, a motion onto table?
Yes.
I believe yes.
Okay, could, could we do that, please?
Tom made the motion and Pat seconded it. So if they'd like to remove those, then we can vote, continue this.
Okay, so the motion in the second that was on the floor has been declined. And Pat, would you please issue a new motion?
Yes. I move to table the discussion of the license renewals for twenty twenty-one until December, until the town's council meeting of December fifteenth.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
The motion's been seconded. We're going to roll call vote. Mike Kane, yes. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
And Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for your time with that.
And Mike, I'll, I'll volunteer to work with Jeannie to clean this up and get the backstories on all the, the various ones that we've had questions on tonight.
I think that's great. This needs a little bit more research based on the topics. And it's not time-sensitive, so. That completes our licensing matter section. And under financial matters, we're, we're asking, or we're looking at FY twenty-one budget increase, which would happen in January. And before we bring our chief in, you know, I've spent some time working on this with Mary. Basically, what's happened is, if you, if you look at our call volume, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into the specifics on what's driven the call volume up, but it's, it's obviously a good thing because it's a revenue stream from the town. So there is an offset for that one sixteen. I look at it this way. You know, you have to, you have to spend the money in order to be able to cover the calls. And if we can't cover those calls, those calls are covered by other companies and we, we are losing a revenue stream. What's, what's worked well and through patience of the fire department is that in order to cover a lot of these calls, these extra calls, people have had to work overtime in much past forty hours a week. And what, what we're headed for is burnout. These people were burnt out and they're already getting tired. And we all know what that's like. And if we're going to continue to be able to dispatch and cover all the calls that are coming in, he's asking for extra personnel. They were patient in asking for this. It was asked for way back when we started. We had a trial and error period. Now we have exact numbers to work with, call volume. And I'm going to let Paul take it from here. He's in the audience. I'm not even going to have to look to see if his hand's up. Don Mackey, could you bring him in, please?
He's on his way.
I knew it.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks for, for, first of all, putting me on the agenda tonight. It's, I didn't specifically put it in the letter, but I think you, I think you hit the nail on the head. It is a sense of urgency. Within the department, we have, we've had an extremely busy year. And the, the current group of firefighters, the, the twenty-one that we have on staff, they've really stepped up prior to COVID even, just making the ambulance service what it is and the fire department what it is. And, you know, COVID's added that additional stress to it. But our call volume, which historically, if you look around the nation, ambulance runs are down for many departments because of the general, the general sense that if you're not sick of COVID, with COVID, people don't want to go to the hospital if they don't have to. I, I don't think we're experiencing that. I think we just, our, our population and our density shows. The number of runs we have keeps us busy and will keep us busy. I, I, I'm hoping it doesn't go up next year. I hope we, we reach our peak and we can, we can stay comfortable where we are and, and manage the operation the way, the way we're doing it. My, my request tonight is to help offset some of the overtime projected deficit and also hire two new paramedics to start. and also, um, hire two new paramedics to start. Um, sometime in January, uh, the 20th is, is a push. Um, but, um, if given permission, we would do our best to get that started. There is some gear-up time for when that person comes on, those people come on board. Um, if they're trained and experienced with our med control, it's a little faster. We can get them in, in the rotation quicker. Um, I would probably, um, defer some of their academy time for the fire department side of it until after our COVID emergency has subsided a little bit. But, um, the numbers are, I think you, you folks all have, uh, the presentation or the letter that I gave Mary, um, last week shows where, where the funding goes and what it's, what it's for. I can ask, answer any questions if anybody has any based on that or if anything else somebody might think of.
Um, thanks, Paul. Um, does anybody have any questions for Paul on this particular subject matter? Marilyn?
First of all, Paul, this is great. I can't believe the revenue stream that has been, um, triggered with this program. But my question is, you, you indicated that the call volume is less for Long Meadow and for Wilbraham. Can you explain why that might be happening? I mean, are they, are they, I don't know. I'm trying to figure that out. Are they avoiding, you know, taking on certain, certain calls or how does that work?
They're definitely not avoiding taking on certain calls. I just think that, um, the population that they have, we were last year, um, we didn't handle all the calls because we only had one ambulance. We, our total transports out of town were about those same numbers over both communities.
Okay.
Um, they, it's just, I think it's population-based. Long Meadows, you know, has, I think, less of a senior population. They have, uh, not as many nursing homes. Um, I ran some numbers today as far as the percentage of calls or, or, uh, calls for service out of our nursing homes and our elderly housing complexes. And let me see if I can pull that up.
So it's the demographics of our, of our town more so?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, that's helpful to know. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thanks. Um, any other que, I, I see, Ralph, you're next, please?
I just wanted to clarify, Paul. Um, the funding, this isn't in an enterprise fund or anything that's just gotta be used for ambulance. If there's extra money, um, at the end of the year, that goes back to the general budget if I'm, if I remember.
The, the fund is, is actually set up, it's called an ambulance receipts, ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation. And that, those funds, from my understanding, stay in that account and they just roll over year to year. We can't spend it until it's appropriated by the, the governing body, the council.
And so do we know if that fund builds up, if in the future, any of that can be used to offset the budget of fire department?
We have, we've already started offsetting the budget from the fire department. This year I moved two of the career firefighters from the fire department as well as, um, the one, the new, one new hire. Um, my projections for next year with going forward are to move two more additional firefighters to, uh, offset. Last year's my, my fire budget dropped about 5%. This year, um, initial look at it, it's, it's still a little, little early on and we haven't got the complete marching orders from Steve and Mary yet. Um, but we are, I'm thinking about a 9% drop in my fire budget. And, uh, it's, it's gonna level out at some point, um, but I'd like to try and transfer more and more people over every year. And once, next year's budget, the, the last lease payment of the second ambulance will be made for the FY22 budget, the, the lease payment will be made. So that'll allow us, with Steve's assistance, we can, we can start putting money away for a replacement ambulance. And I don't even know what the timeframe is gonna be, but it'll be down the road in, in, basically in a savings account.
That was my next question for you. So you answered it ahead of time. That, I think this is awesome and, uh, I have no issues with it. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Tom, I know you had a question.
Yeah, I, I did. Paul, this is just a, uh, a question regarding, I know you're moving the salaries. Uh, are you also gonna be paying for the OPEP out of that account?
Our budget last year, we set up, and I don't know, Tom, to be honest with you, it wasn't a light item in the budget, but we had, we had allocated money. Um, how that was set up, when the budget was finalized, I'm not sure, but there was money for it and I forgot what the total was. It was, it was that and it was also the, um, the benefit package. And I forgot what that number was. I'm gonna guess and say, Tom, off the top of my head, I think it was about $45,000 for a piece of it and then another 40 or so thousand for the rest of it. Where, how that money moves, Tom, I, I don't have that answer.
Okay. So my, my question, you know, is, I mean, it just goes back to the basics. You're looking to hire two, uh, new firefighters, paramedics. There's really no cost to the town. This is an income stream that we're, we're, we're currently generating and this is gonna come out of that account. So the town's not gonna be, uh, this won't be on the tax base in the town.
Correct. This is, this is not coming from the general fund.
Thank you.
Right. Um, Mary?
Um, Mike, if I could just momentarily, I, I know your focus and the point of the presentation is primarily on the dollars and cents. And I know I'm echoing the things that the chief has already represented to me and his personnel, but we have to take care of our people and it's dire. Paul's probably too modest to say the efforts that his firefighters and paramedics have put forward since this pandemic, uh, occurred and with the second ambulance, but it's very clear, if you drive around town, you see all the signs in people's front yards about thank you to our essential workers and so forth. Well, this is a way to thank them, um, by, sorry to be vulgar, but putting our money where our mouth is, um, and, and representing the fact that we know how hard they're working and the support they need. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record for purposes of the firefighters and paramedics and Paul, knowing how much they're appreciated.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. I just, I just wanna point out too that these, you know, both these hires, they are dual-trained. Obviously, everyone understands the terminology here, firefighter slash paramedic. And I'm sure that the, uh, department head or whoever Paul delegates to, um, these people will be used in whatever capacity we need to provide to services, whether it's fire or, uh, personal services for our residents. Um, so I, I think it's a great move and, and I wanna say, um, I, you know, being part of this from way back, um, thank you for being patient and, and thank you for your staff working through these tough times to get to January. But before we burn out the staff that we have right now and can't provide those services, it's time to act on this. That being said, if there's no other questions, um, there isn't, uh, a sound, uh, motion for this, but I believe we will need a motion to approve. Unless I'm missing paperwork.
No, that's missing. I'm sorry.
It's, it's fine. We're just following protocol. Would somebody like to, Kathy?
I'll just try to wing it in live time here. I move to authorize the fire chief to move forward with hiring two firefighters slash paramedics in January 2021 and cover projected overtime shortfall in the amount of $116,023.93.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. It's been seconded. Any?
Correction, Mike. I think that was 73 cents if I'm reading it right. This was the record.
Um, I see 73 on my paper.
116,023.93? Is that, is that the number?
93. That's a typo. Me again. Sorry.
What is it, Jeannie? 93?
Right. How it appears on Paul's, Paul's request.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I'm sure the chief would kick in the extra 20 cents if it be.
Short of the record, just to keep it correct.
If, yeah, if the amendment's been made and we're all comfortable, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to, um, roll call vote this. Um, Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Um, I'm a yes as well. Pat?
Absolutely, yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Okay. That's great. Great news. Um, we look forward to the addition in January. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
And if I don't see you, have a Merry Christmas.
You as well.
Okay. Um, so, uh, financial matters is complete. There is no all-business under new business. Um, before, uh, that, uh, motion is presented, um, I just would like to briefly, um, speak that, uh, there was a charter review committee meeting. We have seven members there and, and one alternate in place. And there's been discussion about, um, how these appointments are made. We all, we all heard previous discussions on the subject matter. Basically, the town manager appoints, um, the council has a period of time, either with a, uh, council meeting or 45 days, um, to reject if there is a majority of the council. And, um, if, if we were gonna get into the, get into the specifics and discuss, um, certain parameters of those individuals, it would be held under executive session. Um, the, the departments have appointed, but I wanna say appointed contingent, um, only on moving forward upon a majority vote of the town council. So they understand, um, that it is in front of us and that's what we're here to do tonight. So if I could have a motion on the approval of, um, Joseph Williams, and that will, um, we'll be able to enter discussion at that point and, uh, take course of action.
I move to approve the appointment of Joseph Williams to the East Long Meadow Housing Authority.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this subject matter? Pat?
Mike, further discussion?
Oh, okay. Ralph?
I just, um, it's not really our job to approve the appointment. It would only be up to us to, um, say that, uh, that person couldn't be appointed, correct? Via the charter?
I let Ralph say what I was gonna say.
Yeah, we would have to say no. Um, appointment goes through automatically.
Right.
So I mean, I don't, this makes it sound like we're taking the vote on this and I don't, I mean, our only vote would be to deny the person.
This makes us seem like we're approving it and we don't have the right of approval. We have the right of veto. Mary has the right of appointment and we only have the right of veto. So I don't, I disagree with this presentation.
So I would think we would just discuss the person and, um, if there's no opposition, on to the next one.
All right. Then I, I will ask at this point in time, there is a motion on the floor right now. Um, that motion will have to be retracted, but I will leave it on the floor momentarily, um, to, to cipher, is there any more discussion on the matter or do we wanna move toward retracting the motion? Then, um, the motion was made by Marilyn. Would, um, would you wanna retract this motion at this point in time?
Yes.
I will rescind that motion.
Thank you. And the second, please?
And I'll, I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. Um, and, and the councils, um, um, how, how do we feel about approving the appointment that has been brought forward us tonight for Joseph Williams? Marilyn?
I'd just like to say that I'm pleased that we have, um, a citizen that's willing to serve in the capacity of a member of the East Long Meadow Housing Authority and that I have no objections and I welcome him aboard.
Likewise. And I would say that, um, I'm, I'm happy that the Housing Authority spent the time to reach out and, um, get to know this applicant. And I'm sure Mary took a, a second, um, look at a, all the credentials and what they bring to the table. And, um, so we're happy to welcome him aboard. Um, the next subject matter would be the appointment of Christine Johnson to the Board of Health and the same process has taken place. Does anyone have any questions on that subject matter? I'll start with Don.
Who, who is she, uh, replacing?
Dr. Henshaw.
Oh.
Dr. Henshaw moved to, uh, out-of-town, uh, councilor.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Um, Pat?
I would generally be inclined to approve anybody Mary approves of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice vote of confidence there. Um, we're following the charter. Okay. So, um, we don't have any executive session planned for tonight. Um, before we close, I'm, I'm sure everybody feels the, uh, same way. I wanna, you know, thank the planning board and anyone in our subcommittee, um, our council for all the meetings we've had, uh, for the patience to endure all the conversations and dialogue to, um, have a successful outcome tonight with the, uh, public hearing protocol regarding the mixed-use Village District Bylaw. So, um, that being said, it's been a couple of years, everyone, everyone that participated, thank you so much for that. Um, any summary action items based off tonight's meeting that they'd like to carry forward to, uh, our next council meeting, short of the tabled, uh, motion regarding the renewal of the 2021 licenses? And I see none. Um, but I will see all of you in a week hopefully. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made, moved and seconded. Um, we are adjourned at 8:47 and thank you all for your time and enjoy the rest of your evening and get something to eat.
Thank you all.
Thanks to everyone.
This week.
Take care.